Ready, Ian?
I do too.
Like two rugby teams lining up. Who's gonna win the scrum?
The December meeting of the Rehoboth Beach Planning Commission in conjunction with the Board of Commissioners will now start. Let's have a Pledge of Allegiance. Which is a little different for us, but not for the Commissioners.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our Secretary is missing, your Secretary is missing. I'll do the roll call. Susan Gay.
Here.
Mr. Hubbard.
Here.
Ms. Lucera.
Here.
Mr. Markert is traveling. The Chair is here. Mr. Perry.
Here.
Mr. Strange.
Here.
Mr. Trunzo.
Here.
Mr. Weber.
Here.
And for the Commissioners, Mayor Coons.
Here.
Stan Mills.
Here.
Lisa Schlosser is traveling. Tony Sharp.
Here.
Pat Calusi is traveling. And Mr. Byrne.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, and although it's not on here, I'll just ask Ann. Ann, it was noticed as a joint meeting, et cetera, anything special?
Special joint meeting.
Special joint meeting. Okay. This is, and welcome to not very many folks, and a new Commissioner who hasn't been sworn in yet.
Great.
This is meant as a discussion of a working draft of the 2020 Comprehensive Development Plan, or the CDP. And let me just make, before we get started, oh, let me introduce, at the rostrum is Debbie File from KCI, our consultant, Lauren Good. Okay, to the left. Who else have we got? No one else at this point. Let me just make a couple comments about the purpose of the joint meeting and what this is all about. I think everybody in the room probably knows what the Comprehensive Development Plan is. It comes about because of state requirements. The Planning Commission, perhaps not everybody in the room knows this, but the Planning Commission really gets its marching orders, not from the city of Rehoboth, but really from the state, out of Title 22, Chapter 7. And the Planning Commission, under state law, is charged with the responsibilities of dealing with zoning, partitioning, those kinds of things, and the development and the production of a comprehensive development plan. And that takes place now once every 10 years. It used to be once every five years, but it's once every 10 years. And the Planning Commission is basically charged with the responsibility of assembling, putting that plan together, dealing, talking with the stakeholders, the people that live in the community, the, all of the community, both residential and commercial, and in fact the towns that surround us, and putting together this comprehensive development plan. We do that, the last one was authorized by the state in July of 2010, and I think everybody has seen it, it is up on the web to be seen. The state requires that we review that plan at least at a five-year interval, which we did in 2015. And although we elected not to revise the 2010 plan, we summarized in that document what we had accomplished, or what had been accomplished, also what remained to be done. And we added some comments about some, what we called threats, if you like, or new issues. But rather than deal with them in 2015, we said we would defer and deal with them in the 2020 plan. So we're sort of on that march right now for the 2020 plan, which hopefully will be able to be submitted to the state in time for it to be approved in July of 2020. The plan, or having a comprehensive development plan, really, if you look at it, I guess legally, and maybe Glenn might argue about this, but it's a really, it's a fallout of the Tenth Amendment of the Constitution, which basically says that anything that isn't designated to the federal government, or specifically prohibited from the states by the federal government in the Constitution, falls to the state. So basically, the states within their boundaries of their charters are responsible for the use of land. And principally, the Comprehensive Development Plan tries to address situations related to land use, zoning, where people can build, the density that they can build at, where people can't build, preservation of natural resources, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Principally, it deals with those kinds of issues. And the state in turn turns around to the counties and all the municipalities, and asks them to help in doing this, and put together your comprehensive plan. So they then assemble, the state then assembles, well, what happens is, we'll put together a plan, we'll ultimately present it to the public, the Rehoboth public, it will be presented to the Commissioners. Commissioners will ultimately have to vote on that plan, hopefully approve it, hopefully have, depends on how many iterations we go through. And then it will be submitted to the Office of State Planning, Connie Holland's office, where it will be reviewed by the state and various departments within the state. That can be a lengthy process. If anybody's paid attention to the comprehensive plan for Sussex County, they know that that's gone back and forth a number of times, has been turned down or rejected a number of times. And ultimately, it gets to a point where the State Planning Office is willing to support it, and the various committees within the state. And then it gets submitted to the Governor, and hopefully the Governor then signs it, and then it becomes an official plan, gets returned to us. And we have to do some things about that plan. It has, the plan carries a certain degree of force of law, and it's important that everybody understand that, especially our new members who haven't gone through this process before. For the counties, it's treated, force of law is treated a little differently than for the municipalities. For the counties, they principally deal with issues related to zoning. So if a comprehensive plan says that something must be rezoned, change of zone, new zones, whatever, change classifications of zones, it is up to the county governments to make those changes officially by law within 18 months of the issuance of the plan. The same is true for the municipalities, okay? So we must do that also by law. But for the municipalities, the courts in the last 10 years, maybe 12 years, have taken a somewhat broader view of comprehensive development plans. And although the, it isn't exactly black and white, they have taken the positions that things other than zoning, that the plan says will happen, will happen, whether the Commissioners change laws or code or not. So the courts have, in some cases, interpreted the plans of particular municipalities of having said that something's gonna happen, and they say, "It's gonna happen." Okay? That puts an awful lot of pressure on us and the writers of the plan to make sure that we understand the difference between will and shall, and might be, or it might be nice that, you know, the conditional things. Because if we are not careful, and we say something will happen, and the plan gets approved, it's supposed to happen. So it's just, it's a little twist that most people aren't familiar with, but that's, the courts have sort of taken that position, not broadly, but on certain things.
Right, do you want to comment?
Yeah, 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 please.
Sure, sure. So I mean, there is definitely some, that is shaping up in the law a bit. There was a case out of Kent County where a land developer had argued that he should be entitled to a certain density of housing units based upon something that was anticipated on the Comprehensive Development Plan. And although the County Council had not taken, Levy Court in Kent County, although Levy Court had not taken measures to actually implement the zoning changes that were contemplated within the text of the comprehensive plan document, the court said, "You didn't get it done like you said you were gonna get it done." Therefore, the plan effectively rezoned the property, and the landowner was able to go forward with a development consistent with the comprehensive plan, but inconsistent with what the code at the time said. So as the Chairman says, the words that are used in the plan do have consequences.
Yeah. So just everybody be aware of that. So as we go along over the next year, year and a half, as words get put on paper, we have to be very, very careful about that. All right, history, we, earlier this year, I think it was back in March and April, we made a decision that we needed to have some consultation on the development of this plan. We had used a consultant in the past for the 2010 plan. And we ultimately, after interviewing several consulting firms familiar with land use, et cetera, we hired KCI of Dover, I think, right?
Correct.
Dover. And Debbie File, to my right, to my right, to your left, and Lauren Good, on the other side, are consultants with KCI, and they're helping us put the plan together. So we're gonna turn this meeting over very shortly to Debbie, who has a presentation. There's a lot of background material which is distributed, I guess everybody here got that material. Some of it will not be discussed today. It's meant as homework over the next month or so. Debbie's gonna tell us what homework we've got to do. But what we're trying to do is make the information about this process as well-known as possible to all the stakeholders. It's tough in Rehoboth because we have so many people that have part-time homes and that are not always here, or at least all during the year, they're not here. So it's, we're going to make some choices to try and broaden how we communicate with people. We'll be using the web so that it, probably, we will be able to answer some of these questions on the web, submit comments on the web. There are perhaps problems with that, but we're gonna be trying all of the various media things. Similarly, we will have a series of meetings mapped out, I think you'll probably cover them today.
Yes.
And where we will discuss very specific items that we are, we think are the most important thing. And as we did in the past, we'll invite everyone in that has an interest in discussing those items, and that will generate information for the Planning Commission, for us to mull over in our minds. And ultimately, these, some of these will get placed into a new plan. Okay? So that's what the intent of the process is. We'll see how it works. So Debbie?
Thank you very much. First, I'd like to just poll the audience, and raise your hand if you have been a part of a comprehensive plan process for a government entity. Glenn higher. All right, so about four in the room, five. And there's different components of that. There's implementation, which the Board of Commissioners is heavily involved in as the Planning Commission. So I just wanted to gear and figure out what our audiences were talking to. So today, I apologize for the amount of slides. Traditionally, in our presentation, we do not have over 30 slides. We're gonna explain some of the approach that we have differently, and some upload that saved you some time. So today's meeting agenda, quick introductions, which I believe David introduced myself. I'm the project manager for the team. Lauren is the project lead. She's sitting over there taking very good diligent notes and watching body languages, believe it or not. So a little bit of experience about KCI for the people that don't know, quickly, not a shameless plug, but to let you know that we represent over 12 municipalities, just in the state of Delaware, for on-call, several services. We are currently doing eight active comprehensive plans, and just completed one recently for a small municipality, and received certification within two days from the Governor, which is usually unheard of in that process. So I just wanna let you know, we have lessons learned. We have, all of the municipalities we're representing, with the exception of one right now, is about, are about six to eight months ahead of where we're at in Rehoboth. So it's great. Some of the products we've had, some of the outreach materials, some of the lessons learned will be applicable, could be knowledgeable for Rehoboth. Even though we know Rehoboth is different, every community is different, some of the tools and resources will be available. So we're gonna go over the project scope, so everybody understands what we were hired to do, what the scope was agreed upon between the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners, and what our objectives are. A little bit about data collection. We're gonna talk about our outreach initiatives briefly, and this time of year, everybody loves to get homework. And then the next steps. So as you see, we are your partners in progress on the project. We do not fail on our project, which means the city will not fail, is where our end goal is. We pride ourselves on our reputation and availability. We pulled a comprehensive plan definition. David went over a couple of the first slides, so I'm not gonna read these to you because we have the meat of the meeting to get to. This is a comprehensive plan definition from the American Planning Association, PAS report. So it actually is from the Planner's Dictionary, which is where we usually go to for a lot of planning documents. So as David alluded to, the adopted official statement of a legislative body of a local government. That's where I really want everybody to understand, this is the local government's regulation and official statement. The state has requirements of what has to be in it, the county has parameters of what they feel is near it, and so do other municipalities, but it is the City of Rehoboth's document. In words, illustrations, and/or tables, goals, policies, guidelines, intended to direct the present and future physical, I won't keep going on. But the reason I wanted to bring this up right now is because I wanna tip my hat just a little bit when we get into the legal, the next slide on the legal, because I think what David said was really, really good, and I think he alluded to scare a couple people, which is good, to understand what we're getting into. But I do wanna let you know, Title 22, Section 702 is a municipal code. Every municipality in the state of Delaware has to follow that code when it comes to the requirements. There is a checklist by state code of the documents, there's a checklist in Office of State Planning. The current population, not seasonal, the current population by the census data is under 2,000. However, we're very close to a threshold, and the State Planning is recommending we use some of the checklist over the 2,000. So we'll be entertaining that in the process with the Planning Commission. We did do a pre-update-plus review, which means you go to the state with your old plan, and you say, "What don't you like? What do you like? What are you gonna acquire to be done?" And/or county and state, "What have you done since the last plan?" So that gets to be our to-do list. That helps us scope to make sure, in the end, we don't get a surprise to say, "The state now wants this." And we're currently, like I said, through eight comprehensive plans right now, we haven't had a surprise yet. So we work with State Planning, the state agencies, and the counties quite often. So we'll be addressing those plus updates, and they'll come out in our data reveal, what the state had to say about Rehoboth. Over half of it is standard language, we have a couple things we wanna look at. So we'll be going over that at the data reveal, which is the next meeting, next meeting we'd be attending. County coordination as well. As you know, the Sussex County's been in the paper quite a bit lately. They just adopted their plan, and they are, they have a new tilt of the hat in the Planning Department. They're updating the regulations, they're doing some wetland buffers, et cetera, so there's a lot of activity going on there. But that is their jurisdiction, and what they want to do in their comprehensive plan. So it does not spill over, other than growth areas in Rehoboth, who wants a growth area where. And we need to update all our state references. The state and the counties have done a lot of implementation. The city itself has done a lot of projects and a lot of things since the last update, so we actually wanna put those in the plan. So the Planning Commission is aware of several of those implementation items, and they put those in the plan. However, there's several other city things that are happening with several of your great committees, that we need to make sure we're putting in the plan as well. So that shows what Rehoboth has been doing, where you've invested some money, and where you wanna go. It also lays you up for future funding. So we wanna know about some of the state references and what's been done. As David alluded to, your update is officially due 7/23/2020. I do wanna let you know that while the document has text and maps, and please speak anytime, Glenn, if I'm out of turn, because I'm not a lawyer, I only act to be some days, but on the two things that the state really looks at, and this is usually the legal cases that we see a lot, your future land use map, what land use you wanna see on each single piece of property. Within 18 months by state law, it's what you wanna see on each property, and you have to have the zoning match it. When you have those two that do not match, is when you have sometimes one or two options for a developer to come in and be able to do things. There's a lot of municipalities 10 years ago that did not match those up. They actually did not inventory the future land use to make sure it's matching up to the zoning. I can tell you that all eight of our jurisdictions, we've done an inventory parcel by parcel, and there's a recommendation now of what the future land use says has to match an appropriate applicable zoning category. So if you decide to take that further than the map and get into the text, then the text can also be used in whichever side of the fence the land use applicant wants to use. So sometimes you don't get into the meat of the text of acres or how much you want. You identify your land use, but it's very rare that I found the text to be really what gets you in the trouble. It's the future land use and the zoning not matching. You're gonna have several items in your plan that may never be done, and I wanna be very, very clear about that. There's several items in your plan that will never be done, because it takes funding to do them. So every municipality in the state of Delaware, in their yearly report that they have to provide, their annual report, their 10-month report, they are not finishing up all of their implementation items, because they're trying to get more funding, they're trying to keep things moving. And budget drives everything. So the state wants you to continue working on them at the pace, at the priority that you feel locally you need to. They're not telling you when and how you feel you need to locally. So I wanna be very clear about that. I've never seen a comprehensive plan in the state of Delaware finish what they said they were gonna do, five years, 10 years, because it takes money. And this is an unfunded mandate. It's an unfunded mandate to the municipalities. So there's a realistic approach as well. So in the project scope, we really try to average this into four phases. We identify the resources, we collect a lot of data, a lot of data, and we start creating and molding the plan. In the second phase, we start with a kickoff, which is, we're at the first part of Phase Two right now, which is the kickoff meeting. And we preempted this a little faster than we usually do in data collection, but we've got some homework for the Planning Commission to do in the next three months, so we thought it'd be appropriate. And then the community outreach event and survey, this is big. We need to hear what the community has to say. And by the community, we talk about stakeholders, locals, visitors, businesses, landlords, property owners, tenants, et cetera. We wanna hear from everybody that contributes or has some kind of investment or nature of visiting in the community. After that, we get into the plan input and draft the document. The last phase is Phase Four, which is a plan presentation, public comment, and adoption. And there's state, as David alluded to, state requirements in there. But Phase Four should really be more of a rubber stamp on what we're doing. The idea of our projects, and the way we like to do them, and the way we actually pitched it to the city, was to say, "We want upfront information, upfront input, to be able to mold the chapters the way the community, the Commissions, and the Board of Commissioners wants to see things." And then we get to the end, it's easier for everybody to redline a plan, but we really want upfront input, and specific topic input as we go through that project. So we have in our proposal, and proposals are driven by budget, once again, or by allowances or resources, et cetera, we have proposed five joint meetings. It doesn't seem like a lot, however jointly, there's certain milestones. So basically, it's a milestone tonight, so everybody knows the Planning Commission is working hard on this. We are gonna be using the city staff resources to work on this project. So we're probably gonna ask a little bit of resistancy to giving everybody so many more projects if possible, because this has to take top priority. So the next meeting that's joint that we're recommending is data collection. This is, we're gonna get into this, this is what the census has to say, what the state, the county, and some of the city records, that people in the audience, from the Commissioners to the audience, to the committee, have never seen these statistics before. So this'll be great data to share. It can be used for funding, it can be used for different objectives, or to mold the shape and the way that you wanna see the community in the next 10 years. After we do the data collection review, which is the highlights, then we do not have another joint meeting until we have the draft document.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Could I make a comment about that?
Sure.
If you were watching the county go through its process over the last year or so, one of the problems that the county had, which we were made aware of, was the difficulty in getting good information about who is actually here, the demographics. And the county unfortunately made some mistakes in their first assessment of demographics, which skewed perhaps some of their thinking about what needed to be done. If anybody has, you know, you're paying attention to the newspapers, you know that this county has been growing at about 2% or 2.5%, at least the eastern portion of the county, per year. And that includes both permanent people and the visitors, second homeowners, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And some mistakes were made, or omissions were made, on the part of the county that we learned about, and of course, I'm sure Debbie knows about too, which then sent them off in the wrong direction in making some conclusions. So that's why so much time is being spent upfront, trying to define the demographics, not only of people who live in the city, but people who are using the city. And anyone that, you know, came here for winters in 1988 knows that the city closed down, you know, between November and March, essentially, and there were 26 restaurants or 27 restaurants. And we now have 77, 78 restaurants, and the city has opened pretty much all year long. Well, the number of people in the city that live here fundamentally hasn't changed all that amount. Perhaps their demographics have changed, their ages, et cetera, but it's the people in the surrounding area who claim they live in Rehoboth, but in fact live in the unincorporated county. So keep that in mind as we start to go through this plan, and you will see why we are focusing, or have to focus, so much on what's around us, which is not really the city itself. I'm sorry.
Okay. So I, we're still on project scope, and we haven't done a data reveal, but I do want for the record to be heard that I do not feel the county made any error in their comprehensive plan. They did pull data, and you have to pick a number in seasonal census. They've done some research on other municipalities, and they chose a number, and they felt it was justified. It might not be the same for the county, but for the record, I'm very aware of the process, and you have to make some decisions at certain times. So I wanna keep going through the scope, and the data reveal, and the census information. We can only make assumptions based on data that we have, unless we have another mechanism that has data or studies to be able to develop it. So with that being said, we have the draft document presentation, so five joint meetings, three Planning Commissions. We also have three additional Planning Commissions built in as an option, because we feel we're gonna have some topic-driven meetings. We don't know what those topics are yet, the hot topics, or issues, or slant of the data, because we haven't collected it yet. So we know opinions of what we think some of things need to be addressed, but we haven't heard internally or externally from the input. So the plan approach that we have is to update your existing plan and maps, that's a gimme, that's required. We wanna collect updated and factual data. So while we've worked with the staff to say, "What kind of data do you have? Do you feel it's factual? When did you collect it? Who collected it? If it's not factual data, then it's something that we might pass in this study, but we'll be able to bring back to the Commission to make the decision." So we're bringing several different mechanisms of data. And data that can be backed, which is what we're looking for, for decision-making purposes. Ensure proper information is easily available. So we're gonna be working with your Public Information Officer, Communications Officer, to have a link just for the website, on the city's website, just for the comprehensive plan. So today's presentation will be on there. We're gonna try to save some trees, I see the big packets were printed. We're gonna save some trees and have the presentations placed up there, even though we know this is audio, all the attachments, so we have transparency in the process, and it's an educational process. We will overwhelm you with documentation up there. But for the people that wanna be involved, we're very happy to have you involved in the process and the input. We'd like to attain community input, and that's on several different levels. The more, this is a learning process, as you heard, only five or six people have been involved in the process. So this is learning from the community. The Board of Commissioners are gonna learn, maybe how the community feels on certain topics. The Planning Commission is gonna learn how people feel on certain topics. And that'll help make decisions from here for the next 10 years. Provide ample time for draft review and documents. If you've ever read a comprehensive plan, it's right up there with Nyquil when you go to bed. It is a really good sleeping tool, depending on what sections you're in, almost like reading some engineering documents. However, we want plenty of time for people to be able to read it, put it down, walk around the town, read it again, reapply it, and make some comments. reapply it and make some comments. So we'll have ample time for the draft review and comments. We would also like a mechanism, we promoted in our process, to review and track and prepare recommendations for all comments. We would like to be able to house all the comments on the comprehensive plan, collect every single comment without even saying who it's from and getting stuck on that, giving a recommendation of how we would address it and having it come back to the planning commission. That way, every comment from every single person is logged in, tracked, identified and has a recommendation for an action item. I think that's really important, because a lot of people, a lot of times that people feel that they're not, their word might not be being heard. And I think that's a great document to protect us, the planning commission and the community. Then we'll ensure compliance with the two thousand fifteen Office of State Planning checklist. We just met with them yesterday on another project and we said, you're not going to change this, right? So we're still sticking with the two thousand fifteen checklist, it's still good. And our job is to obtain approvals from all levels of the government, the local, the county and the state. So we have been receiving and collecting a lot of data. This looks like a lot of stuff, this is one of Lauren's eight pages. When I put one on line up there to say it's data collection, that's probably about thirty hours for Lauren to process, analyze and get all the information. So we've received an inventory questionnaire that we sent to the city. And all this was is a ten-page document, just like this. And it just says, are you tracking it and how do you have it? Is it in Word, Excel, is it accessible? So we can find out what they're tracking. We have meetings in, we had meetings in December and January to find out, how good is this data? Business license, building permits. Those have never been put in your comprehensive plan. So now let's find out what is going on, what's our trends, what's our factual data? And be able to take that information. That'll be available at the data reveal. We've had our goal review spreadsheet. So here's the great news about Rehoboth. We actually had multiple scoping meetings before we got to this first kickoff meeting. And the planning commission is very eager where they filled out the goal review spreadsheets. We have the SWOT analysis completed from the commissioners and the board. That's usually the next meeting. So while it feels like we're not moving fast enough, we're actually a meeting ahead. So we changed things up a little bit today. We have an action item status review we've received. That was done in two thousand fifteen. And there's an annual report of what is the city up to every year that we compile. Ongoing, we're constantly updating the maps from the state level to the county to the municipalities. We collect city photos. We're going to task the planning commission again with collecting city photos for our document, so it doesn't turn into a sleeping document at the end of the day. And detailed available data, multi-level government resources. This is large. I mean, you have several committees here. Guess what we're doing? We're taking all your committee information and making sure that some of that is getting put into the plan. There's a lot of different tentacles in Rehoboth that have different committees doing great things. But what if we can take some of the information and some of their implementation items to help get additional funding? It's still one city with several different boards and commissions. And then the ongoing census. We just had a couple tracks just got updated last week, or first week of December. So you'll be having that most update census data available as well. So on the SWOT analysis, this is the length of the meeting. So a SWOT analysis is strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. So it is an anonymous exercise that provides honest individual perspectives regarding a specific topic. How does it help us? Is it, it assists us in obtaining localized individual, so those two words are important, localized individual input that is released collectively from more of an internal perspective. So we had this assignment, this is called internal data collection. Who participated? The city boards, the council, committees and staff were all asked to fill this out. So now we want a perspective from the governing body and the regulators before we get external input, which is from the community stakeholder, businesses, et cetera. There are two different viewpoints, who uses certain avenues differently. So with that, I just went over the strengths. We said, what are the characteristics of the city that give it an advantage? What are the weaknesses, weakness characteristics that place it at a disadvantage? What are the elements that could use to its advantage and elements that could cause trouble? Believe it or not, when you go through these, some of them can be the same. Some can be a weakness or a threat and the opinions are different. We just got done with another jurisdiction this morning. We had four people at a table, all of them had different perspectives. We loved it, they didn't. We loved it because that's great. That helps us understand each other and why and how it affects them. So out of all the responses, or out of all the SWOTS we collected, we had seventeen collective responses. So we thought, well, this isn't a very high number, because look at how many people in here and the staff. However, some of the departments did it as a department-wide collective survey, which was great. So we have a hundred and thirty-eight strengths that were collected, a hundred and twenty-four weaknesses. On a Friday, I'd take that pretty good, you have more strengths than weaknesses. You have seventy-seven opportunities that were mentioned and eighty-eight threats. Once again, we said these were localized opinionated questions. So as we get into the meat of this, this is where my disclaimer and I got to take my jacket off, because it gets hot. So this is where this PowerPoint presentation goes on and on and on and on. And we're hoping to get out of here by five o'clock for, before five o'clock. Usually, we give this document in twelve pages. We type it up, it's twelve pages and you read it. What we wanted to do is be completely transparent and really have everybody look at this eagerly over the holidays. It's very hard to read, one hundred and some strengths or SWOT analysis. So we put this in the PowerPoint, so it can be put up on the website. Everything has been recorded in there, verbatim, verbatim. And we appreciate everybody being professional and honest and really good spelling down here. So what we did was we went through several of the strengths just to start off. And we highlighted in red, things that are not redundant. Because believe it or not, what is great, some people said the same thing. So that means people thought we had some of the same strengths. That's great. So you're going to see a first few of the slides are going to be all red and then it starts tapering off, because we, we've talked about the trees twenty times. So I'm just going to go through a couple of these and I'm going to gauge the audience to see if I need to just keep reading or I just hit some highlights. Because this information is available, going to be available online and we have it in packets as well. There's some really good comments though. So one of the strengths that we received, once again, this is the internal outreach, is the people involved who care about Rehoboth Beach. And I have to say, I don't live in Rehoboth, I visit, I come to several different events. So it, you can tell the people, you can tell in a community for the people that are involved, the people that care, that put their heart and soul in several different aspects of it. Citizen volunteers who are willing to serve on committee, or city committees. The good news about a comp plan and going through the process and the outreach is, you may find other people want your seat someday. And the planning commission may want to try, may want to move into another role. The board of commissioners may want to move into another role. You get some different blood, some new property owners, and that always gets things going good in the future. So you can find a new batch of volunteers in this process. It's a great location with many advantages for residents, visitors, biking, walking, restaurants, beach, ambiance and friendly neighbors. Small size, it's a walkable town. There's lots of trees that are so close to the ocean. High property values. Now, some people can think that that's a weakness, but this is put on the strength. Clean beach, one-mile boardwalk, unique small restaurants making it a dining destination. So I'm just going to, believe it or not, roll through some of these and if anybody wants to interact, this is truly somebody's opinion. Rehoboth Beach has its own nine-one-one center and is able to dispatch police, fire and ambulance for the city of Rehoboth and Rehoboth Fire District. Once again, that's pretty, that's a pretty rare asset for the municipality to have. Police Department has a state-of-the-art facility. The, I bet they wrote that. No, just kidding. You do have a state-of-the-art facility and a great chief. The longevity of officers working for the city ensures familiarity and continuity with the citizens and businesses. The police department has support of the community. So once again, we just took a strong objective and tried to lump these together. Some of these are, just to give you the overall. City maintains a clean and safe environment. So these are real, I think these are really, really good comments. I love doing the strengths versus the negative, I just, I'm that energy person. Parking revenue generated as a result of Rehoboth being a resort community provides additional revenue over and above the operating budget and allows for purchases that might otherwise be possible. Now, the community might have something different to say about that. Remember, we're internal survey and these are the people that know budgets, process, how things help. Special events are often centralized in the three Bs area, boardwalk, beach and bandstand. This provides an opportunity for more concentrated surveillance of the areas. And a friendly staff. Sharon, put that one in there. No, just kidding Sharon. Past efforts of city government and concerns citizens have kept the city's small-town feeling. Limited high-rise buildings, limited size of restaurants, bars and other commercial establishments. Franchise not viable. Restaurant variety and quality among the best in the state. Low real estate tax space. No sales tax. And it's one of the most popular destinations of the East Coast. So anybody that's in business in the audience, these are great taglines. A beautiful residential community, a vibrant downtown commercial area. Once again, we keep hearing about the police force, friendly, safe, clean. Just, I do not want to discredit anybody's comments, but instead of leaving at eight o'clock tonight, we thought we'd just condense some of these. Zip. The family friendly and it's affordable, some more strengths.
What is zip?
Does it mean that they don't think there are any strengths or that they like our zip code?
I, I don't know if it's, I assume it's, is it the car service? I don't know who put the, the code in, but it's the Uber zip, Lauren.
That was the only response under strengths, so I took it to mean they did not have any strengths.
Okay.
And it's our opinion interpretation sometimes. So family affordable, or family friendly, affordable. Numerous recreation activities available. Low crime rate. Less than less a seasonal town. Good coordination between departments on emergency response. Water, excellent water, good quality, good supply, relatively new treatment process, good fire protection flows. You have excess treatment capacity. Readily available commercial assistance, casual, et cetera. Convention center, largest facility in the area. One of your strengths are the workforce flexibility, difficult hours. Waterways. Collaborative planning through community partnerships. Available local and regional services, public, both public and private. Expanded medical facilities. Strong green program, stormwater management, natural resources. Very well governed. So take the kudos as you can before we get to the other ones. Farms in close proximity, farmer's market, farm to table. Culture, art, theme and music, schools, education, it's diverse community. History and traditions. Housing sizes, et cetera, that are regulated. Generally ADA accessible. Skip that one. So those are our strengths. So once again, there's several interpretations that we made just to get to the high level of that. Those are several things that you, as the planning commission digresses and goes through the, the data, these are things that are going to say, how, how can we keep these? If these are the strengths of the community, how do we keep these? Are we at risk of losing some of these? What do we have to do to identify to maintain them? So those are some of the aspects we'll be looking at throughout the document on the strengths. Once again, just the internal side, so this is great, first step. On the weaknesses, Rehoboth is a small town with big city problems at times during the summer season, which creates the need for additional employees. So many visitors who are constantly rotating affect a consistency needed. Parking, trash, neighborhood consideration. Lack of long-term goals with the short-term steps necessary to complete the goals. There is a need to be proactive rather than reactive in regard to plans to constantly review and upgrade policies and practices. Popular tourist destination creates overcrowding issues and problems with traffic and parking. Small size leaves us with little room for enhancements that would be nice to have, such as a parking garage. Lack of year-round population makes it more difficult to be a self-contained town that provides needed services and businesses for residents, i.e. grocery stores, pharmacy. Unwillingness to confront the downsides of tourism. Lax regulation for rental housing result in many hotels disincentive for year-round residents. The proximity of residential and business district, districts create noise and sanitation issues, causing friction between the two communities. Very high commercial rents and small number of landlords make it difficult for small businesses to thrive in town. Lack of infrastructure to support security cameras and additional technology throughout the citi-city. There is a need for additional cell towers in the city, particularly to cover the beach areas due to the report of numerous dropped calls due to cellphone volume. What are they doing on their cellphones on the beach? No. Traffic congestion leaves via Rehoboth Beach and Rehoboth Beach Extended. The traffic light at the church street creates a backup within the city during peak visitor days. Trees need trimming to expose signage more clearly. There is a lack of in-town or local affordable housing for seasonal employees. Some of the same theme. Wilmington Avenue, the first block is nasty with standing water at the Grotto Divery. Needs a streetscape uplift. Hard to attract businesses that are not tourist-driven. Two thousand and ten plans stated that a downtown with only residents, clothing, stores and gift shops is not a downtown. That is essentially what we have and may well have in foreseeable future. City government, commission, committee structure, duplication and cross-purposes. Example, commissioners, planning commission, shade tree commission, mayor's committee and now the law oversight committee have all addressed the tree code. Can't believe I had to read that one. Amount of deferred maintenance of the years has put the city into difficult situations for the future. Major rehabilitation needs and limited funding. One-size-fits-all cookie cutter zoning code. Parking, lack of meter costs, I told you that would come back. Meter costs continually rising. Trash, diapers, food, trash in streets and sidewalks. Perception of low pay for trash personnel. Understanding of roles for Parks and Arborists. Old stormwater system overloaded, undersized. Knowledge of the stormwater system. Little bit of redundancy on the next couple of slides, or our red highlighter didn't work. Silver Lake, where is the progress with the state's ownership? Who is responsible for gazebos enforcing rules and regulations concerning building on land between lake and the street? Inconsistent enforcement which breeds cynicism in residents. Better management of increased number of pools in investment houses. Resistance to change, old-school attitude. Deteriorating and dangerous conditions of sidewalk, condition of sidewalks. Trying not to make you dizzy, but this is available. So we get through the weaknesses and you see how some of the strengths can be viewed as some weaknesses for depending on who the opinion of the person is. The great, the great situation about having the weaknesses is how do we make, first of all, do we all agree? How do we make them better? Can you make them better? And is it within, even within your purview? Is it a state and federal situation? Where you, you maybe want to take a stand where you want to have an opinion further up the chain from the federal regulation to the state government. So now opportunities, I like to go to the positive again. Opportunities. So the willingness of part-time and full-time residents to take on city responsibilities as volunteers. Great opportunity here. Overall pleasant attitude of all visitors and residents. Rehoboth Beach is a walkable city with many amenities within short distances. I just want to allude a little bit there on a personal note. We work for several municipalities and every municipality has a parking problem. That's what we continually hear, we have a parking problem, we have a parking problem. Majority of them don't have a parking problem. They have a you got to walk two blocks to park problem. And you don't want to walk two blocks to park. If you've ever shopped at Sam's Club Walmart, you're almost walking two blocks from when you park your car to the store. So it's something to think about. I'd like to joke on this, it's probably serious for some people, but I like to joke on it when you actually plop, you know, maybe your avenue down in a, in a big box reality, strip mall or something, or, or a mall anymore, and you actually plop it down there, you're walking further probably to do your Christmas shopping. So that's just an observation I like to say, because it seems to be the, the common theme everywhere. Rehoboth attracts visitors, but they need to feel welcomed, informed, respected, anticipated. Unique neighbors could be enhanced through architectural review, neighborhoods, through architectural review and zoning codes that take into account their distinctive characteristics. Rehoboth Beach is considered by many to be a quaint, charming town. This differentiates us from other coastal areas. I hate to be the one to tell you, we work for them and they all call themselves quaint and charming. And must be protected to maintain our competitive advantage as a tourist destination and as a town where people want to live. So we're truly going to find out what makes Rehoboth different, internally and externally. Rehoboth is well-known for its trees. Not only is one of the, not only as one of many tree cities in the US, but for a town so close to the ocean to have so many trees is truly unique. Trees on both public and private property should be encouraged, supported and incentivized. Rehoboth is a destination for fine dining, unique small restaurants. Limits on restaurant size that were put into place years ago have helped to create this atmosphere and should be maintained in the future to ensure that it continues. The creation of safe and sensible walk paths. Because it is time again to update the city's emergency operations procedure, this is an ideal time for the city to work more this is an ideal time for the city to work more closely with the Town of Hanlon Open Acres and North Shores, parentheses Delaware State Police territory, to coordinate emergency and evacuation efforts since both locations require passing through Rehoboth Beach. I think there's been great comments received, I'm, you know, we've done this for a long time and I think these are great comments for all the SWOT analysis. The investment of a more elaborate surveillance system in the boardwalk beach and ban scene area would allow law enforcement to obtain images of suspects and videos of any incidents to be used for investigative, investigation purposes. Rehoboth's strong financial condition, combined with their healthy economy, give the city flexibility to consider opportunities to invest in its future. These opportunities need to be considered with great discipline. The new capital budgeting process is a good step in that direction. Many of Rehoboth's taxes and fees that impact visitors are relatively low. We have the opportunity to raise them to cover costs to accommodate visitors, parking, accommodations, taxes, rental tax. Enhance the city infrastructure is another opportunity. Provide incentives to enhance future renovations, property development. Develop a much more equitable zoning code to provide more smart development. Growth, grow the residential population. Another opportunity is to educate the public about the need to protect our water sources. And a greater emphasis on the parks that we have in addition to the beach. So that, we have made it through, believe it or not. Strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and we have one category left which is threats. So once again, it's great to learn from a different side. I can let you know that the five that are sitting on this side of the table have a different level of information and the fifteen, whatever, ten sitting on this level of table have a different involvement in information. And the two collaborating together with all the committees and all the information we're putting in the conference of plan should help educate and shape and build the bridges with, with all the committees and commissions in the community. So opportunities, whoever did this one gets a planning point. Ed McMahon, urban planner, who made a presentation, The Secrets of Successful Communities, to the community, that's almost a shameful plug by the way. To the community in November two thousand and sixteen, offered a variety of issues the city could examine to improve both commercial and residential districts. A follow-up meeting by representatives of the sponsoring organizations was held in April two thousand and seventeen. Those results could also contribute to potential improvements. The principles of this initiative should be contacted for further information. As a participant, I prepared notes of the follow-up meeting to share to the extent they may be healthy. I may be willing to share. It's time to plan for streetscape projects on both Baltimore and Wilmington avenues. Eliminate on-street parking, wide sidewalks for the purpose of encouraging alfresco dining, restrict auto traffic. What are we waiting for? That's, back to item twenty-nine. It's interesting when you talk to the jurisdictions that have wiped out some of their streets to make it the walkable community. What a risk if they did it ten years ago, what a thought process. And you actually go down there and you look at some of them and the businesses thought it was going to be the worst thing ever and I can't get, you know, I can't, people aren't going to come, they're not going to travel there. And when you talk to those jurisdictions, that's what we love to do, when you call and talk and interview the planning commission and the council. That foresight sometime was the best decision they made and you can learn from those other communities as you do going to several different conferences. But that's something to also think about in your community conference of plan.
If I might make a comment on that?
You may.
That concept was attempted to be put in the two thousand and ten plan. And because of resistance by certain groups that basically said they could not support that. And it ties back into that idea of parking, parking in front of the business that you own and all of those kinds of things. So it, to put it up there and, and see it as an opportunity depends on who you are, how you will react
Absolutely.
to that. So I just want people to realize that that was attempted in two thousand and ten.
So the other thing to think is, there's trends. So what was tempted last year could be, could be the new thing this year. Look at all the gifts you have to buy, look at the technology. So one thing to just, even that was something to look at is maybe in the conference of plan, it's not defined where, how, the details of it. Maybe there's a study, maybe there's funding to be able to say, we'd like to do a study and have, it's something that can't be written and defined in the plan, but it can be an implementation item to further look into. Maybe you get the restaurants together on the committees and you think outside the box a little bit and see how they would hurt or hinder businesses. So there's something to think about because what was done yesterday could be right, could be wrong, just could be moving. People could be shifting. Increase off-season event marketing, reduce rate accommodations. Strict delivery and building trucks from blocking streets, Wilmington Avenue and CC Estates. Some of these are, I love them because some of these are very basic and easy. Some of them are just communicating with people to find the resolution. Streets, better beach access maintenance, equipment, skid steer, more Mobi mats is an opportunity. Set staffing level for next season, seasonal dropout rates. Curtail trash pickup in off-season, change two times weekly to May first through September thirtieth. So I'll give you an example on number thirty-six and number thirty-five. When we get through these with the planning commission, because this is the first reveal, we actually categorize it, what should be a comprehensive plan item and what is an operational item. Operational items are handled by the board of commissioners, the city staff, the budgeting, the departments with those input. If it, if it flows into the comprehensive plan, that's one thing, but operational is different than vision, objectives, and thoughts for the ten-year plan. So something is the trash, it usually determines who's doing it, how's it getting paid for, what's the consistency, is there a survey? And that might not be a comprehensive plan item, other than is there a lot of trash floating in the area, do we have issues with trash receptacles not being contained? Special events coordinator, do we need one? Similar to how the PD manages the fireworks on July fourth? Do we have foresee witch, tree lighting, etc.? Assess utility rates and see if they should be raised, reinvest the additional revenue. Hire pipe video contractor to conduct assessment of collection system. Another opportunity is promote a walkable downtown. So while several people think it is a walkable downtown, maybe we're not promoting enough. That could be as easy as promotional materials or placemaking. Continue to protect and enhance Rehoboth's natural resources. Better enforcement of the city's rental code to ensure occupancy limits are followed. Parking garage is an opportunity. Lewis-Rehoboth Canal Park, another opportunity. Multicultural center including food. Lauren would be going there a lot. Tourism department director. Enhance public relations and marketing program. The city doc, it's in process. Citywide communication system, the phone. Free wifi in the city app is another opportunity. Upgrade the public restrooms. Unique elegant unusual shopping opportunities. And improve working relationship with business community and Rehoboth Beach Main Street. And we have the last one which is threats. So those are the opportunities. Last one is threats. These are true things. The sky is falling, we need to do something about them is our perception, but we'll see what opinions we got internally. At times, the wishes of individuals become paramount to what might be best for other people and the city in general. The loudest voice appears to be heard. That happens a lot in every organization. If you think about how you're involved in everything, that happens everywhere. So now how do we figure that out and work together collectively instead of being right and wrong? Lack of personnel to get other than basic jobs done when the population increases during the summer season. A threat is a national trend. This proportionately affects resort towns toward investment properties acquired solely for the purpose of renting short-term. Another threat is our aging infrastructure. The city is in danger of being overbuilt, currently creating stress on services, infrastructure, stormwater management, cleanliness, etc. In balance in our fundamental two-part identity of residential community and resort. Residential construction trends leading to loss of tree canopy and overall environmental degradation. Degradation, sorry. Lack of access to parking and no alternative transportation solutions may ultimately deter visitors. Increase in tour buses, day trippers. Columbia and Hanlon Open Avenues, both heavily traveled roads, have no designated lanes for pedestrian or cyclists. This creates a hazardous situation. Presently, vehicles are able to access the boardwalk. For greater boardwalk and ban stand protection, the city may want to consider installing vehicular barriers at access points to the boardwalk. Exit points of the city are slowly going, especially Rehoboth Avenue with four points of traffic entering the circle. Overdevelopment in Sussex County, increase in demand for beach access and the services Rehoboth must provide for day visitors, traffic, trash, etc. Other beach towns have had to find ways to limit visitor volume high, via high fees or limiting access. Many hotels, houses built solely for the rental market. Seldom are never owner-occupied. Investor owners will be more interested in maximizing rental income than in maintaining community values. Recent co-changes have limited size and pools, but the problem remains. Further steps may be necessary. Climate change, sea level rise, medium to long-term threat. Storm intensity could be near-term. Beach boardwalk could be severely damaged at almost any time. Threat is increasing, can't be sure that the state and federal governments will continue to pay for restoration. We may need to build a reserve as Dewey has. Lack of incentives to in-town living. Congestion on Route One with the fast pace of housing development west of Route One and the growing seasonal component may lead to the isolation of Rehoboth. As a destination resort, people will exercise to spend their dollars elsewhere since it may not be worth the hassle. Becoming a place only for the rich. Increase in drug use and infiltration of petty crime. Ferry travel is down. Carelessness, distraction of out-of-town drivers. Public drunkenness, after-hours on Avenue and Boardwalk, opportunity for crime and injury. Additional redundancy in our opinion, but very thoughtful. Corporization is diminishing the charm and nature of the town. Again, we tried to lump some of these together. And, again. All right, so back on the threats, we have eighty-five of those. You're going to see some redundancy and very specific recommendations. So it's great that we are already into some specific recommendations, which is great for the commission, the council, and the bodies. Instead of just say, high crime, there's actually some recommendations in there or things that could be referred to. So these will be taken into consideration as internal data that we'll be looking at per chapter, per topic with the planning commission as we develop the plan. To put the layer on top of this now, we're going to be looking at the external data, which is the community. And that's not the only time we're going to ask for your opinions or have homework, I promise. So on the outreach initiatives, this is where we're really strong and we really get out in the community at different levels and different organizations and groups, is promote project awareness. Everybody needs to know that we're working on the conference of plan update. The shameless plug is that we want everybody to know KCI is helping the city, but we want to promote the project, it's your project. We're here to author it, help, listen, and learn, and gather community input. Some of the resources that the city has that are really good is honestly your communications program, your city website, your partners, your businesses, those are really good strengths. It's not limited to that, those are just ones we've identified upfront. Those are great resources to use. The other great resources, as we heard in strengths, is your community. So let's identify stakeholders. And by stakeholders, I don't, do not mean the person that owns the most property in town. I don't mean the person that's the fourth generation. Everybody's a stakeholder. Everybody has, is putting money into contributing, volunteering, everybody's a stakeholder. There's different levels, but everybody has say in this. Community organizations, rather than have us go door-to-door like we're selling spices back in the day or vacuum cleaners, we would rather go through community organizations. If you have a community organization that has a newsletter or emails of a hundred and fifty people or two hundred people, why wouldn't we use that as a portal to get the information out? It's great, let's use your resources, let's use your community strengths and diverse opportunities. We want to hear from everybody, not just the people showing up in the meeting. We know when you do something, raising fees or something that's against what the citizen wants, this room would be full. We want to go out there and ask their opinion now. So we want to beat the streets and kind of help you get this survey up and find out what the community wants. So we have a couple outreach methods that we put in our scope. One is annual community event, a large audience. So in January, the planning commission will be tasked with going through all of the events that you have in the next probably six to eight, maybe nine months, that we could come in and set up shop. And it could be multiple ones in a day, or the planning commission could set up shop to promote the survey. The more, the more people that take this, the more that we, we have a better picture of what the community wants. And it's been a long time since you've done a community-wide study, or community-wide survey on a ten-year plan. So the community survey, we have it online and paper options, we'll be working on that in the next two months. Ample time to provide input. This is not like when you go and go to the store and you have your, or you go to the restaurant and you get your ticket on the back of it, you get something free in two days if you respond. We're actually going to have ample time to provide the input on this. And what we're going to ask from everybody in the community, because we know that's your strength, one of your strengths as a community, is promote, promote, promote. Your neighbors, your relatives, everybody, we want everybody to fill out the survey. We want to find out what the community wants. Not twelve people that were elected or appointed in the government solely. We want to hear what the community wants. And this is the time, this is the chance. We think that's a great opportunity. So with that, we have a survey, review, and input. So what we have, the approach that we've taken with the city, and we met with the planning commission chair and another vice chair, I believe vice chair, right? First thing is, we, it's going to be up to the planning commission on the survey. The length of the survey matters. Let's, the type of questions matter. Why even ask the question? If the question doesn't matter, we do not need the result, let's not ask the question. You will lose people when they have to sit. How many people have dropped off a survey? They started filling it out for maybe something free or their opinion matters and then you just drop off. It just goes on and on, who has time? We have your attention span for a small amount of time and we're talking about a ten-year plan. So condensing that matters. The type of questions, why ask the questions? And they have to be easy to understand. This is difficult to do. I guarantee it's difficult to do, we've done, we've ran several of them in the state. We just had a meeting where people were like, explain the definition of environment. And we had fifteen different answers. And we're like, do we pick the selection from Wikipedia, from APA, from NOAA? So it's, it gets to that level, we want the general public. And the way Lauren and I always say, if my grandmother understands it, then she can fill that out, that's a great survey. So the type of questions, this is going to be up to the planning commission. They're going to work on this in the next two months, but the homework we're asking for, and once again, this is internal, is we have collected several community questions. So we collected, and I know this is a lot, we knew this going into it, but rather than come up with a draft and have it redlined multiple times and the frustration between all parties, we gave twenty-eight pages of potential questions on conference of plans that have been asked in Delaware and mid-Atlantic region by our company, our competitors, municipalities, and counties. So we stuck to what's being asked around your mid-Atlantic region, and these are options. Whether you like the question of the format or not, we wanted to give you that resource. So we're asking for the commissions, the, the board of commissioners and the planning commission to go through that and select some options of the Delaware, one hundred and sixty-two questions of some of those that you like or do not like. Now you will be getting an email next week on explicit instructions of who to respond those to and how to do that, but the person that would be gathering all the information will be the chairperson, which will be David, because they're going to start working on the homework in January and February and molding this survey. The second option we were asked to do, we were asked last Friday, we had a couple in there. We have a couple resort communities, I think only two in Delaware, that had survey, conference of plan questions. So what we did was we went out and found some more recent. We know that not everybody might agree if this is a seasonal or resort tourism community, but they're defined as that, they feel they're that. So we provided seven resort and seasonal surveys. Not all of those questions will be applicable to Rehoboth, we know this one hundred percent. However, we wanted to let you know what some other, once again, resort and tourism surveys. We have some from North Carolina, Massachusetts, Maine, Florida, again, North Carolina, Santa Claus, Indiana. So they are the largest tourism. So we tried to get you a nice bank of different individual questions. Once again, just that category is this thick. But we think we're giving you a large bank of what we felt are seasonal and tourism, and this is a great exercise that we think the board of commissioners should have some input on what they'd like to see, and the planning commission will then mold it, get it prepared, and we'll go ahead and draft it in the order in which you want the questions answered. So we're asking to provide new questions if you have them. If this is something that you want to research or is your passion, we have a lot of educated people on the planning commission, the board of commissioners, if you have questions you want asked, submit those to David, they'll be considered. They'll be considered. The Planning Commission will be working on this for two months. Two months to work out what they can do with questions. So that is the first homework. It's not too bad. The one thing we would like to be very clear, please do not fill them out and turn them back in. We're not there yet. We, we had another community, we asked for the input, they filled out the survey and gave it back to us, and we said, "No, those were questions to see if you want them as questions." So we're very clear now, and please do not fill them out. We will email internally like we did with the other, with the homework assignments. We'll email internally on when they're to be turned in, the format, and to who. So it'll be very clear over the holidays when there's nothing else going on, and it's a quiet, small, quaint town while you're walking around now. You'll have some observations. We do have the front, we did fill out, and everybody's got that in their packet, the general information of what the survey would look like in the initial format content and some wording. The Planning Commission will also be providing input and gathering information to finalize these two steps. When we get it to a better stage of a draft is when we're going to release the final draft to everybody. Here is the format. If you were taking it out on paper, does the Planning Commission like the format? Do they feel it's easy to understand? Then we will start our campaign. We prepare a campaign document that would show when we're going to release the survey, when it'll be due back, how we're going to do it, what stakeholders. We'll have a, it's a campaign plan that we'll be producing in front of the Planning Commission for consideration. And then that'll be released to the Board of Commissioners, the staff, the public, and everybody to ask for your help to promote, promote, promote. So the next steps in our process is the homework for the Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment, or Board of Commissioners, is to review the survey and select the questions. We're looking to have that due January eighth. That's a pretty quick turnaround, but the reason we put January eighth on there is if David has all the responses back just on the survey at their next Planning Commission meeting in January, they can start discussing this. So January eighth is when we're looking at, and the format can be as easy as circling the question, marking it out, redlining it. It's really not as labor-intensive as you think. Then the Planning Commission, unfortunately, because as David alluded, is charged with this task of the Conference of Plan, in January and February, they will be busy at their meetings doing the survey recommendations. So we're asking that the collective response is back to us after the second meeting in February. So in January and February, they'll be working on the survey. February twelfth, we'll be looking for a response, which we'll work on dates with, with David, but February twelfth is our anticipated date to get everything back so we can work on the final survey for consideration. City photos. This is another task that will be given to the Planning Commission Chair to ask the Planning Commission, the city, et cetera, for any kind of city photos. Not on the website. We already have those. But any kind of city photos for consideration. We'll also be working with the city staff as well to obtain those. The next one is organization contact spreadsheet. In your comprehensive plan, we noticed that there is no talk at all about the organizations of Rehoboth at all. So one of our strengths is our community, our volunteers, our organizations. So let's, in this plan, we recommend talking about the organizations. So we have a spreadsheet that lists out the organization, where their website is, what their phone number is, what their email is. We will put that in a table and a chart. Why would somebody want to live or move here if they see a large amount of organizations and volunteers and community? That is one of the reasons people move. That is a big reason people move is for community stability, safety-ness. So we'll be giving a spreadsheet to the Planning Commission Chair, and we will also be looking at outreach event opportunities, which we talked about. So we have the same due date. The other homework assignment is, once we identify the organization, we would like the Planning Commission members on assignment of David or volunteerism to assign each organization to a Planning Commission member to do an interview with them. What do they do? What's their goal? What's their capacity? What are things that the city can be able to help them? Or, or do they want to get involved? So an organizational interview form helps. That's data as well. It also gets the Planning Commission in front of other people in the community as far as organizations. So this is our task for January, February, March, the first quarter, while we're working on the data collection. So the next step for KCI then, we're analyzing the staff data. We are not sitting on our hands, trust me. Analyzing the staff data, we're updating our data, the county, the state, the federal, to let you know what each, what's happening in each one of those and how it can impact you. We're going to be preparing the plan, always obtain updated mapping data, and we're creating new maps constantly. Coordinate the outreach event. We'll be working on that campaign we talked about and preparing for the next meeting. So while we have everybody doing their homework and the Planning Commission has the first quarter of tasks to do, is the next KCI meeting date is a special meeting determined in March. We actually had that as March ninth, but we'll coordinate that with you, David, on scheduling of who's in town. That is a joint meeting with the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners. This is the data reveal meeting. This is when we're going to be talking about specific census information, city data information, county information, state, and we're going to reveal our outreach approach with our schedule. So this meeting, you're going to see tables, charts, and graphs for the first time in updated information. Maybe you aren't aware of how many building permits. Maybe you aren't aware of certain aspects or thresholds or trends that are happening in the city or the census data or the county. So we're going to be sharing all of that with you. So when we send that email out as well, we'll be asking for a date from David. We'll put that on there. We definitely want the public to come to that. That is a factual data reveal meeting. The only thing we're doing at that meeting is revealing the data. We're not at a discussion point yet. We're revealing the data to bring it back to the Planning Commission. That is part of our first phase of our external data. Then we go to the community after that. So when we get that data, it helps to say, "What topics do we think we're going to have to talk about amongst the commissioners as we make this, form this plan?" And then we launch our community survey for several months.
Deb, if I might, just to comment, although you've identified dates, which typically are our second Friday
Yes.
standard meeting date, the reality is, is that as we get into those months, we will probably have to schedule special meetings for the work related to the comprehensive development plan, because it is very possible that we might have actual real subdivision business and real business, our other side of the business before us at that time.
So in January, it's completely
They may have to slip.
So March, we didn't put a date in there thinking that
Yep.
we're not sure if something's coming back.
Yeah, I'm just
Yep. So those will be probably special because we're not going to go on, we know you have business at your meetings, it's Planning Commission meetings, and you have business. So we put to be determined, but we know we're going to have to have our work done by March. That's the next time you'll see us at a public meeting. That's our second joint meeting then. We've kicked off the project. We're going to reveal the data. We're going to also reveal how we reach outreach in the community so everybody in here will know when we're going to launch our survey. And we, we look forward to working with the city of Rehoboth and the Conference of Plan Development Update Project. The hardest part of the project is slowly staying in our lanes for just a little bit because trustiness to form will be on the superhighway soon will happen. But if you, if we give you too much, then it gets lost in translation and we just have a shelf product. We really want to say, "What is the internal data? What is the data reveal from the census, county, state, and city? What does the community have to say?" And then let's see what we have to work with. Let's see what we have to work with after that. And I think that's probably a good approach as we, you know, pitched in our presentation and I think was part of the reason we were hired. It's just hard to slowly take some of the baby steps. So if anybody feels that they have time on their hands, we can assign more homework. But we thought with the holidays, we thought we'd slowly start with this and completely are excited to see what we get back from the Board of Commissioners that would report it to the Planning Commission and then get back for us to formalize it in a format. So that's five points for just being under five o'clock. I'd like to open up the floor for any questions.
Questions? Tony?
Joyce, I think first.
Yes, I have a question. At the beginning, you said the project scope.
Yes.
And that it involves the physical, social, and economic development. When, when I look at the old, the two thousand and ten that we studied, and then there was a review for the fifteen, what do you mean by economic development that the Planning Commission deals with? And then you made a distinction in the financial responsibilities, and I don't, I don't see that in our old plan.
So I feel you had a really good plan. It was a lot, there was a lot of vision and a lot of writing to the feeling and where people wanted to go. However, if you look at the way it's supposed to be broken down, the state recommendation is by housing. What do you feel about housing? What's your priorities? What's your objectives? Where are you lacking housing types? Do you have this many houses that are single-family, multifamily? That data wasn't put in there on a calculation standpoint to figure out what you have to know where you're going. So there's a lot of assumptions and feelings versus more data. When you talk about the economic development side of things
That's the part, yeah.
So the economic development side of things, are we in redevelopment mode? So for example, the Planning Commission sees the plans in front of them, but there's several other levels of approvals that happen on the building permit side. So by getting the data on the building permit, the planning, the redevelopment in buildings that used to be restaurant or t-shirt shops changing into something else as a restaurant, or two structures changing into something larger, a restaurant and a tourism venue, those are the economic factors where you can see the trends. So we'll have the data to show you what has happened, what has been built, what has been tore down, where is the redevelopment happening? So you can identify after the data comes in and the, the community survey, your SWAT, and after the data comes in from the city services, you can identify maybe what's lacking or what we have too much of or not enough of. And those are recommendations
But we don't do research on the, on the cost of things. I mean, we've talked about Wilmington Avenue or Baltimore Avenue and cutting through and all that, but, you know, those are nice ideas. But when you say economic development, I don't know whether we need a, you know, some section that deals with finances, how we do this. The only thing in here that talked about revenue was parking, and we all
So I think a good, and maybe I could, should have started with the analogy of the Planning Commission and then the Board of Commissioners. So the Planning Commission may come up and say, "We would like to look at two streets, these two identified streets as far as street scape projects and maybe removing vehicle traffic." That's an idea that maybe came from the survey, it maybe came from the SWAT. We've heard this. We'd like to be able to investigate this. So it's going to determine more planning, more reporting, more communication. It's not going to be detailed into this document, but it might lay it up for a study. It might lay it up to say, "We really need the people on those streets to form a committee." We might need a special committee. We might need a blend of the Planning Commission, the tree community, the Main Street community. We might need a blend of people to research this initiative that we've identified in our plan. Now, how much that costs and what it does really starts fading over then into the Board of Commissioners. So the Board of Commissioners would then come in, and what, what a good implementation item we'd like to see in your plan, one is for each year, the Planning Commission really in probably October or September, go through their Conference of Plan and say, "These are the things we'd like to do in this next year." Your plan is going to say everything you're going to do in ten years, and it's overwhelming. If the Planning Commission has an organizational-type meeting in September and says, "These are the things that we would look at, that we'd like to do next year," and these are the, if they're studies, if they're specific things, you turn it into the Board of Commissioners and Sharon, and work with them on the budget to say, "What do they have allocated for these incentives? How can they get grant money or federal money or make it a priority?" And they would have the say on the financial component of where the investment comes.
But that involves more interaction
Absolutely.
with the, with the commissioners.
Yes. So you can, you can think of an annual meeting, and the, the result of that annual meeting that's great is for the Planning Commission to say, "This is what we'd like to work on next year. We've done a little bit of homework, and here's how much we think it's going to cost." Sharon, do we have grant money? She's really good at making all of us get money. So Sharon, do we have grant money? When it comes back, then the Board of Commissioners could say, "You know what? We think these are the top three priorities or top two priorities. We've been thinking about this a while, and we would like to task you to head those up, but we would like maybe another committee to come work with you or two other people to be on a committee." Since you have so many different committees, it depends on the topic. You might have a separate special committee on that topic to come back and report. But I think the annual meeting of how much it costs to do things and what is your priorities in that plan is really important to be able to relay back to the Board of Commissioners.
Joyce, if I might, traditionally, well, first of all, Paul and I have had informal discussions on, on the effectiveness of what the role of the Planning Commission should be after the comprehensive development plan, in fact, has been submitted. And I guess, I think both of us probably feel we, we have not done a good enough job of continuity of how to execute the plan. And we probably have some ideas on that, and certainly the commissioners have the, the power to make certain things happen. Traditionally, in the past, and this has always been an argument, is the, the Planning Commission has sort of created the plan, handed it over to the commissioners and say, "Execute it." And the commissioners have criticized us, for instance, in the past of not having prioritized important things, okay? But on the other hand, they said, "But we're the ones with the purse strings, and therefore prioritization is basically assigning money to these things." So you can't have it both ways. We've got to do a better job. I think the fact that we're now looking at five-year capital budgets, that gives us the, the kind of incentive to get some of these things going. The other thing is economics, and show you just how some of this comes to play. We had people come before the Planning Commission, owners, property owners, commercial property owners, at a time that we were talking about the dual role of commercial and residential. What's it called?
Mixed use. Mixed use.
Mixed use.
Mixed use. I'm sorry. Yeah, mixed use. And, and we were told point-blank by one of the property owners in town, he thought mixed use was really great. We had never defined what mixed use should be, but on the assumption that mixed use was commercial on the ground and residential above, he said, "Your, your current code doesn't allow me to do that. I can't make money if, if I follow the building code the way it is, okay? I can't make money because I can't get enough space out of the property that I have in order to make the residential portion pay money." So there's an, there's an area where both code, pre-existing code, the existing code related to what you can build, what you can't build, has an economic impact, okay? We, we need to do more about understanding what those problems are and seeing if there are solutions to those.
And remember to use your city managers' portal, the liaison portal. So if you're hearing something that could be affected by something else, is to report it to the city manager, because it could be as easy as a quick zoning ordinance change, a quick interpretation of the building code, and that's a whole nother organization, a whole nother group. So I think it's really important that the, the overlap, because what'll happen is the volunteers sometimes feel like they're not moving forward. You, you did a great plan, and then it sits. The commissioner's like, "We have sewer and water and ocean outfall and, and a lot of this other stuff." But the, the, I think the teamwork part of this is there's several boards that are coming to the Board of Commissioners for money, support, and funding. So collectively, annually, one of the processes that you can do, especially with a capital improvement, is to say, "Boards and commissions, all of our committees of all sorts of different kinds, you have several of them, what do you need from us financially and supportive-wise?" What that also does is give the Board of Commissioners a tracking mechanism to say, "We provided you ten thousand dollars. We got a grant for ten thousand dollars. Planning Commission, you have twenty thousand dollars to get this in a year. This is your task. Report back to us." So that way, you're doing something instead of everybody kind of going in their own direction and doing their own things. You have a definitive direction for the year. You know what you're doing on top of what you normally do. But what your research that you do on a committee may need to also involve another committee, and I think that's where the overlap really needs to happen. The only governing body that has the total jurisdiction is the Board of Commissioners. On the Conference of Plan, yes, it is for you to, you to recommend. It's for you to, it is the force of law, but it takes money to do just about anything in there.
Tony, you had a comment.
Yes.
I just wanted to get really clear on the homework.
Oh, yes. We appreciate that.
Well, I, I know that it, it will be due to Chair Mellon on January eighth. So did you say we already have it, or you will be sending it out electronically?
So what I thought is because we really do not give kickoff information ahead of time normally. Because what we're going to do is we're going to send an email with the attachments, very specific instructions of how to do them and who to send them back to.
And when will you be sending that?
Monday, the latest.
Excellent. Okay.
We know it will be blamed if we delay it.
Oh, yes.
Are you going to send that directly to all the individuals? Or are you going to send it to Ann and ask for distribution?
Ann. That way we have a funnel.
Do we, is that possible, Ann? Do we do it that way?
That's how the Swats were, the Swats were actually headed up by Evan. So whoever Sharon chooses in her staff that's available, we will send it off to Sharon and, and then they can determine who wants to release the information back out. But it'll be a collective, easy to understand packet. Welcome aboard, you have your first homework assignment. We'll, we'll take homework from those that aren't sworn in yet, I assume.
And I'm also curious, just in your experience, what's, what's about the number of survey questions that, for the community and the business?
Two, no. No, you're done. Usually the, the threshold that we've learned in all of our survey training that we've had is 20 to 25 and that's still a lot. So when you're filling out 20 questions and there might be 15 results on the bottom, it ends up being 45. So just think about collectively, if you answer one question, can we get multiple questions in the one question? So I would not, 20, depending on how they are, people drop off. And you'll find, because the results that we get will say, for, and we're going to put it, when we get to the survey launch, we're actually going to challenge to give you a number. We've done it in some other facilities. Believe it or not, some of your neighboring communities are up to 400, almost 500 surveys. Some of them are triple the amount of people that voted for the last election. We're happy with those results. And when they come back, it's eye-opening, we, we love that number. But it starts with questions one through 10, 400, 200, 50. We get to the last and sometimes it's just 50, decided to finish. We'll know.
So when you say community, we will or we will not be able to know or be able to differentiate the people within the city limits of Rehoboth Beach versus elsewhere?
Yes, so we, we filled, we filled the front part of that first page out that says, we just changed. One of the organizations said, if you, we would like to know if you pay city taxes. And then one person said, well, what if I didn't pay city taxes? And I said, well, I'd never say that. So one is, do you pay city taxes? You are considered a property owner in the city.
Okay.
That's this category. If you do not pay city taxes, you're considered out of city. So we have different categories depending on how we want to arrange it. But definitely in-city and out are two different categories we recommend here.
Thank you.
Yeah, but, but I would point out that, that we have year-round rental people in the city who technically don't pay the taxes. So you've got to be careful with how you word that question.
If they don't pay taxes, they would fill out the non-city property owner.
Non-city, but, but living in the city. I, I think the, the concern that probably I have and maybe others have is, is that we have to be very careful. We've had this discussion about stakeholders on, our responsibility is to our city, to the people that own property here, to the people that live here. Yes, we have responsibility to the people surrounding us, but I don't, I would feel a little bit uncomfortable if, if some of the responses that we got were overwhelming coming from the county, not from the actual city.
But we will know that by.
We need to differentiate.
And we have two months to figure this out. So we will know, we definitely want to know in-town residents and out of town. And I'll give you an example. If I'm a contributor, which I was saying to David earlier, I'm a contributor, Rehoboth. I do not live here, I do not own property. I Airbnb it or I rent, which everybody hates, but I'll, I'll stay at different places sometimes. But I contribute, let me tell you, my paycheck contributes. So as a contributor, Rehoboth might want to think that that has a value. That really has a value. I'm not saying I contribute a lot, but, but that's a value. So think, I don't think it hurts to have opinions. It's categorizing them that's important.
That is the key.
Yeah, that's the key.
To weight, because different stakeholders have different, are weighted differently.
And I think when you get to that first page, you'll be able to say if you want it broken down more. We have two surveys, by the way, I forgot to mention. One is a community survey, the other one is a business survey. So it's really important on the distinctions of those two. You can actually answer both. But the businesses in, all of our community surveys, we actually have had the survey taken by anybody that has a business and it just says, do you have a business in town or do you have a business out of town? Some of our municipalities have said, we only want to hear from those businesses that have a business located in the city limits. That's completely up to you what you want to filter. You could have more businesses fill it out west of Route 1, fill it out. And what impact does that have? Do you want their business input or do they, you want their community input? Because the business input, you really don't have a say on. But I bet you they come into the community, just like Henlopen Acres is another example. You have a town that has to come through a city, correct? To get into Henlopen Acres, you have to come through the city. So you, so the opinion, I would want community opinion on Henlopen Acres. I bet you they're a contributor, they have to come through here, they have to drive through it. I bet you catch them with something. And I bet you they're probably involved in the organizations and volunteerism. So that's community survey as well. So I think you open, yes, sorry, I know you've raised your hand several times.
That's okay. The, I have quite, my, my question, I just want to take advantage of the time that you're in front of us to help me understand something. This is not about the surveys.
Okay.
But in general, the sorting process and following up on Joyce's question about what falls, falls under which category. There, there are some very, very big things that I don't see here and it's not necessarily a gap. Maybe it's just things that change over time. Like one, which is an infrastructure, economic development issue would be lack of fiber access, you know.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, so that, that's something that I would definitely like to see us address.
Absolutely.
And, and I'm not looking for an answer, but just the kind of like global thinking I'm thinking of. The other one is energy source, you know, what is our carbon footprint? How are we sequestering it? You know, what role does trees have? Where do renewables fit in? You know, we have lots of opportunities here. And I don't see anything specific on that. But yet, energy is one of the core infrastructure things that, that, you know, I'm hoping we make more prominent and fit in.
Correct. I, I have to say, I'm really impressed that somebody actually brought up broadband and fibers infrastructure. We are in that industry and it is as important in communities as water and sewer. So people are understanding that, I'll just give you a broad example. The city of Ocean City, we just got done installing small cell wireless under their boardwalk and designing the light poles and the trash cans to hide the mechanism of the small cell because of the art deco appearance they wanted. And the principal side of it is why do we need, why would you need more wireless on the beach? Shut everything off and enjoy it. However, they made a distinct decision that people will not vacation without their children with that as a utility. So they're missing that age, that, that demographic, the population. And people are making reservations on their phone and they're reading books that they need. So there's several different, so that's a trend, that's not a trend, that's here to stay. And if the beach community or resort community north of them chose to do that, people could make decisions, one or the other, because of that infrastructure.
And we want entrepreneurs here, you know, a few people, you know, let's start your business here.
Absolutely. So I think that's a good, we're definitely going to put that in and that, those are good questions that you, with that thought process and those two ideas, think of where to put those in the survey because I think those are really important. And what you brought up, infrastructure, which is good. So I hear in the SWAT, aging, it's not good enough, here's where we're at. Well, how many people in the planning commission really know, really, really know what's going on with your water, sewer and stormwater? Really, really know. But I bet the board of commissioners does a little bit more because you're, you have to go through the bills, the incentives, the grants, the loans. So bridging that gap to say, Sharon, the public works department, what are we doing with water, sewer? What are we doing with stormwater? That's a chapter in your comp, that's a chapter, that's data we're collecting that'll bring you up to say, it might not be as bad or maybe it's lead replacement. Maybe there's some other initiatives that they already have that aren't in the comp plan that we need to bring into the comp plan to be able to help bridge that gap. Yes. Did I answer that well enough? I'm sorry.
Yes, that's a huge help, thank you.
Great, thanks.
I had actually a couple of other things I was going to talk about before. Since you said infrastructure, I just have to say, you know, we've got a big project in front of us with, with the wastewater treatment plant. And I think maybe with tying it into the comp plan, we ought to start there because it's right in front of us. And we have to do a plan that takes, takes us out in the next 10 years. And we've got a critical piece of infrastructure that's going to stay or not stay or, and so what can we do in the short run to help you sort through that?
Is that a question?
It is a question.
So we have collected the data and that will be revealed.
What data, what data do you have, seriously?
So we will collect.
ASAP.
Your task right now is the survey. This is where the lane. And the reason I say that is because when you see the data, it literally, the planning commission's thought on this is do you have capacity? Do you have capacity?
That is one question, but that is only one.
Right, so the type, approach, method, funding mechanism crosses moreover onto the operational side. But as far as the capacity, the approach, the environmental side of things definitely goes over here. But then what we need to do is we've got the data, we've started collecting the data from the public works department and the capital improvement project, which is new for this year. So you'll see that come in when we get to that topic of infrastructure.
Debbie.
Yes.
Behind Susan's question, is, is it, this may be information that the, the commissioners don't have. But in the course of doing some of our work on subdivision and the building of new developments, okay, we were faced with the issue of the design for sewer capacity on code, okay? And our own city engineers, our own departments basically evaluated the pumping stations, evaluated whatever the, the requirements were based on code. And we were, some of us were suspect of, about that. So we asked for some help from Sharon, actually from Dom first and then from Sharon. And we actually collected real data, okay? So what we asked for was tell us the sewer bills for the summer, okay? And we, and because we know what the meter readings are and we can look at three-bedroom homes, five-bedroom homes, six-bedroom homes. The data that we got, which I think was statistically good, at least for that question at that time, showed a significant difference between what actually happens and what the code predicted, which raised in our minds the question of the capacity of pumping stations, maybe even some of the sewer lines. So it's, it's how you get your data and where you get your data from that can make a gigantic difference in the answers you get.
And making sure that the roles are defined. So we review plans and if an engineer and the staff and the state have said that we have capacity, that is the level that it's usually reviewed at the planning commission. It feels it's a little bit more detailed here, but that's usually the capacity in the plan. It's usually a capacity component and we've written several of those. A PER report, preliminary engineering report is the details. A wastewater treatment facility plan, those are the details. Those don't get put in a comprehensive plan. Those are truly the details, the mechanism of like a pump station audit. Are all of your pump stations working right? Can they be working better? Are they overtasked? That is a whole infrastructure, public works, detailed mechanism that if they're deficient, the identification of the comp plan would just say, there's a need for a PER. There's a need for a state, there's a need for a placement of lead pipes. But that gets through asset management, public works, your PERs. The mechanisms the state requires at the comprehensive level is capacity. Do you have enough capacity? Can you allocate, can you find out where your capacity is, where your growth is? It's great for Rehoboth because you have redevelopment and as you were saying, the three bedrooms versus maybe a one bedroom before, six bedrooms versus two bedrooms. That's great, but that requires an engineering study. That requires a study to be able to talk about your facilities plan and how you're going to.
We need to look at the data citywide and this was only a sample that we looked at. But that's, the problem is that we are faced with maybe not even having our control over our plant. So that's why it becomes important because if we look at this stuff and what we find, how is that going to be useful to, you know, to the county? I mean, there's a lot on the table right now.
Right.
Anybody in the audience got any questions? You've been silent.
It's not even fine yet.
The silent audience. Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. They're, they're going to remain silent.
Remain silent? It's like a class I'm teaching, can't get the students to say anything. If I may, on that, on that subject, because just what I've been reading in the paper with regard to the potential future of our wastewater management system, is I look at the comprehensive plan, which, which Lynn has already commented on, that has the force and effect of law, but it's only been applied in statewide about two or three times over the last 10 or 15 years. And one case, the decision went against the comprehensive plan, another one, it went to the, to the developer. But I see the value of the comprehensive plan as dealing, even if the state had nothing to do with this, that we should be doing a comprehensive plan for our own benefit. Because we care about the future of our community and our town. And so in that sense, even though the state has certain requirements and the state, as you said earlier, we used to joke about this for a number of years, we were considered the same as Ellendale from a state perspective. We are not Ellendale. We have not been Ellendale for the last 30 years. And yet, we're considered as Ellendale. And that's strictly because the state has to deal with generalities and they could care less. They look at it, we stamp it, they approve it, goodbye, good luck, we'll see you in five years. But we as a town live it every day. And I think that is really important. So now we have something coming up that's maybe very significant and there've been some preliminary analyses that were done. But from a comprehensive standing plan point, the perspective that is taken is very different than quite frankly, what an engineering assessment. And the state says, well, capacity is the issue. As an example, if you look at our town from a standpoint of capacity, we currently have excess capacity and we are a bounded town. We've got about a mile, that's it. And although the, the individual homes may get larger and that's an issue to be dealt with, when we go across Route 1, Sussex County is growing at an exceedingly rapid rate. And so if you do an accounting analysis and only goes out five years, you get a distorted perspective. And when we do plans or when you do plans on major infrastructure projects, you usually do them for 10 or 20 years. Even though the assumptions get very fuzzy as you get far out, you just do a sensitivity analysis to determine what can really kill us? What's the mistake we're going to make? And, and basically, I see the comprehensive plan as foresight is much better than hindsight. And that's really what we have the opportunity to do here. And so even though we have a, I would say, a pressing need with regard to the sewage treatment and the water issue, and it should be addressed and I think it should take all our collective wisdom to make the best possible decision. It's not something that, that's based on strictly short-term accounting principles. It's based on a much larger issue than that. And so from that perspective, the data collection is very important. But we have one that's coming up that's in our face right now that we have to look at in a much broader perspective. With that, I'll shut up.
No, everybody's opinion matters in this process and, you know, we're happy the public has showed up today for the kickoff and this is the first meeting. So to be determined and moving forward. So we have homework and tasks for the planning commission, board, yes.
Is there, since we started discussing this, the mayor has attended every meeting we've had. And I'm wondering if we can reciprocate some way by, I don't know, giving a summary of where we are and presenting it to the commissioners.
Each month, you mean?
Well, as we come up with something, as we come up with the, whatever it is, so that we're trying, somebody has to try and involve the other. And I don't know that we just leave it upon them and say, you all don't know what we're doing because the mayor does, but nobody does or whatever. Is there a way that we can, as we're starting, make sure that, and, and maybe it's the two of you, maybe it's you and the mayor work it out, I don't know. But some way that we don't hit surprises when we come to something and the commissioners say, boy, there's no way that's going to go, you know, and we may have spent two months on it.
You've brought up.
I don't know, it's just a suggestion that since you all are here, the mayor has been coming and that we just somehow try and build on that. However, however it works, it doesn't have to be formal, it could be an informal way of communicating.
Minutes. That's a really good point. There's a lot of municipalities that have a liaison for boards where there's a liaison that goes to the commission. Because you also have several, at the data reveal in meeting last week, we said, what about all the other committees? What about all the committees that are working on great things that would, that contribute to the comp plan that we don't have here or they haven't gotten a packet? So we said, let's make sure all of the committees that are, that are appointed or assigned in Rehoboth come to the data reveal. Because that data could affect what they're doing or could be in hindsight, great for them to get funding or organization input. So I think there's mechanisms that can be done, there could be reports monthly, and that's on everything. Like they're probably, what you want to do is kind of bridge any kind of gap you feel that communication might be happening.
I guess I've made an assumption that in the report that we get from the planning commission at our regular meetings, that since today was the kickoff, that going forward, that would be the spot.
An item.
Yes.
That we would get some information. But in many of these cases, it seems like we're going to be here.
Yes.
And some things should be alerted, you know? We're looking at this and it's, you know, not everybody agrees. Not everybody here agrees, you know, not everybody there agrees. This is.
My, my experience is that when you start this process, in, in each one of these steps, in each one of these steps, there's sort of a little bit of chaos that goes on initially. And it takes a number of go-arounds and talking and until you sort of get focused and figure out what's the important thing. And I would be cautious to report at the chaos phase, okay? Because you're passing too much information and then people are just, they can't handle it. So it seems to me that you live through that phase as a working group. And then when you start to gel ideas, that's when you pass them on.
We haven't come up with anything yet.
No, no.
No, no, not yet. But I can tell you, we will be providing monthly reports to the commissioners because our contract is with the Board of Commissioners with our invoices as well. So it will be what have we done the month, the same thing the Planning Commission gets. David gets an end-of-the-month report, a little bit more detailed. But now that we have the kickoff, there's monthly reports from your consultant to let you know where we are in our contract, our scope, our meetings, and what was, you know, we don't have any determinations yet, but.
And just to be clear, those reports will come to this Board of Commissioners in addition to this Planner's Commissioner?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
Yep. This is the first, after the kickoff, the monthly reports will come to both Boards and Commissioners. And they'll be posted on the, on our website.
They'll be on the web also.
So transparency will be for all of our documentation.
Debbie, a couple of other observations. First of all, is it possible to go back through the, because I know you'd said you had 17 respondents and some of them were departments. And it's very obvious from reading that some of them are staff because of the detail.
Absolutely.
Some of them, I didn't even know what they were talking about because it's an internal.
We do, that's great.
I would like to see the SWAT separated out, staff and everybody else. Because as you pointed out earlier, you know, those are operational issues and they're different from planning issues. So I understand that, you know, you keep the individual responses confidential, but if we could divide them, I think it would help us.
Right. So we, the way that we did that was anonymous, and we preferred not to put who was what category and who responded where because it would show that maybe some of the Planning Commission didn't turn in and the Board of Commissioners did, or some departments didn't. So what we can do-
I'm just talking about department versus everybody else.
I can let you know that what we can do, what we prefer to do, because we requested that anonymously, we prefer to give you the two lists when we do the data reveal to say, this is operational task, because we get some operational from the Planning Commission and the Council. This is operational task and we feel this is comprehensive. And that's really what you're, what you need versus who did what.
Yeah, I'm just saying that, again, it's sort of different stakeholders, different weights.
Internal collective.
You know, it's internal and it's different from the community. And I think we need to know, you know, who's who. But let me say a couple of things about surveys. First of all, I'm really, I'm grateful for the amount of technology we have available today that was certainly not available in 2009 when the previous comprehensive plan got started. And I want to make the most of that. We have a great communications program here and we have, you know, we have the website and all the other, you know, tools through the community organizations and all of that. I also, you know, like the idea of surveys. And some of the surveys the city has done, it has gotten a lot of responses, like the Tree Survey got 400 responses.
Oh, wow.
It did, from all over, from people outside the city as well. And then there are other questions that they've put out through the new portal that, you know, it doesn't, haven't gotten so many. And you've talked about the limitations of surveys. You've talked about not making them too long. And yet, at the same time, we have a lot of very complex issues here. And what I don't see on the schedule is a whole series of public meetings and workshops. And I know that with the last plan, I, you know, wasn't in the city as a property owner at that point, but I was certainly aware of the processes that went on and have gone back and looked at it. And I believe they had something like, you know, two dozen workshops.
Seventeen.
Okay. Meetings and workshops. And in fact, just in today's paper, I read that the town of Milford has just finished its comprehensive plan. And they started in 2014, by the way. So I was a little nervous about how we're going to do ours in a year and a half. But that's another story. And they, and in that, they mentioned having had 12 public meetings. And so, you know, passion runs deep in this town. And we see it every time we have a project that comes before us for review and people out in the audience come to voice their opinions and they come with strong evidence and strong history and a perspective. And it's very rich indeed. And it would be great to capture that in a positive setting for planning rather than a setting where they're opposed to something. And I can't say enough for, you know, the whole process of public meeting. I don't mean public hearings, but meetings and workshops where not only are topics addressed, but you have a different, a different meeting with different constituent groups. So you have business owners that are, that rent their, lease their businesses separate from business owners who are landlords, separate from property owners, separate from visitors. And collectively, I mean, I see that as our job to collectively find, you know, the commonalities. But, and people play off of each other in settings like that too, where someone will make a comment and it'll spur somebody else on. And I just think that's something that's not captured in surveys. So I hope that throughout, somehow or other, we can put in a dozen or more of these kind of-
So when we scoped this project, more so here than any place. And that was all pro bono. We met multiple times on your scope. We said multiple times, we feel you're going to need more meetings. Multiple times in every single setting that we are about outreach in organizations. But I'm going to be very honest in saying you have nothing to talk about right now. And the reason I say that is because we don't know what topics are hot topics and what topics are low topics yet. So nobody, I think, we scoped one event. But that event, one community outreach event, which means we set up a tent, that means that we can hit one event in the morning and hit three organizations in the afternoon. Or we can say, we warrant to say, let's set up, and I'm going to use the old school, they don't say it much, but the charrettes. Where you go into HOAs, communities.
That's what we need, those charrettes, yes.
Except for we don't know how many topics we're going to be talking about right now? What are the hot buttons? So once we get through the data collection, the surveys, the community surveys, what is it that we really need to find out or address or drill down on more? That is why, I think, really, probably David and Sharon said, three additional meetings. Let's put in the proposal for right now. We might need 20, but let's push three in the budget. So we have three as, I'm going to say, probably the allowance on the backside if we're really good. But we're also willing, KCI has come in, we have done three additional outreach events because we wanted some promotion as well. But we've come down to events, we're doing, we're doing the election in one of the municipalities because everybody shows up that day. So we're setting up a tent outside to promote the survey. We're actually going live for our survey that day, sending out postcards.
The survey isn't the same as getting all those people in a room.
I agree. But we have to promote the survey to find out what the topics are for the organization.
In order to then go the next step.
We're not, I know you're very excited, we're not there yet. I'm going to ask you to do the homework we've assigned first. But no, great ideas.
I know we don't know what we don't know yet, but I just want to put it out there.
Right, we are definitely.
Ultimately, we need to, yeah.
And there's great organizations here.
Have the meetings when the people are here.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I also want to let you know, when you said you're scared about schedule, 12 of the municipalities in the state of Delaware asked for extensions on their plan because, because of the results they got from their survey were overwhelming. And they wanted time to address things with the public. So the state planning and Office of Cabinet said, we've been in front of them for five of them. We had 400 results, somebody thought it was going to be 30. And they want time to go through them, which, let's see what we get. And I think I agree, we're definitely, but we do not want to hold back community outreach for budgeting purposes, which we've done a little bit on our own, and for neglecting any community. But I think that's good. And we've got all these comments down moving forward, which is great.
Isn't it possible that the hot issues would be more fully identified by having the meetings as Susan is suggesting with the various, you know, interest groups, for lack of a better term? My concern is that we get them involved as soon as possible.
Yes.
Interacting with us, you know, whether it's the business owners who actually own the property, the landlords versus the business proprietors who rent the space for their operations or whether it's our residents and everything else. I mean, the only outreach I sort of saw in here was assigning us to various, you know, organizations that work within the city, which I think is a great idea. But I think that the surveys are a check-the-box kind of thing. And I just, while they're very helpful, I don't think that, you know, as Susan pointed out, we have a lot of complex issues in this community. And I think the only way we're really going to identify the hot issues that we need to address is by having in-person meetings with those interest groups.
And I agree, and I think that's a great approach and we want to do it. I do disagree about the survey checking the boxes because we analyze that. So we analyze that data and give it back to you. And here's the, here's a really good moment I would like everybody to think about. Let's go talk to the bicycle organization. The organization's doing all the bikes. Let's go talk to them, let's just hear what they have to say. Or what if we talked to them about how much money's been invested in bikes? Or studies that have been done, or other things that have been done, or other things that the community has done? Let's bring some information to educate. It's a great education opportunity to be able to have dialogue and discussion versus what is it we can do for you or what do you think your issues are right now? Or we think it's this. That community survey actually just gets us a report card, not to say that every organization doesn't have, but that gets us a report card of what are some of the top 10? Not to say that the other 10 do not matter. But at least we'll be able to take data from the city, the state, the county on some of those topic-driven events. I guarantee you that in our outreach, when you see our outreach plan, which has to be approved by the Planning Commission, the steps, who to talk to, when to talk to, it is way before we even start crafting the chapters. It is not to release the draft amendment. But we haven't gotten, we haven't been given an opportunity to write the outreach plan yet because this is the kickoff meeting. So we have a plan actually that comes up to say, who should we talk to? When should we talk to? And that's a discussion point for the Planning Commission, that's its own meeting is the outreach plan.
So the launch date for the survey just reminded me when approximately the launch would be?
If the Planning Commission gets their homework done.
We'll just assume everybody gets their homework.
Yes, January, February, we'd like the draft results. We would then be in March revealing the draft report. We'd like it to go to the Planning Commission first before the joint, so they have time to be able to see it. And then revealing, this is under consideration, we'd like to actually, so April.
You're saying March for the survey?
We have to design, we have to design the survey after we get the input from the Planning Commission. We do that in March, the beginning of March.
The survey will be a subset of these million and one questions.
I know. I only have one question. And it is, when is the anticipated launch of the survey? Not how you get to the survey.
March, March.
I would, yeah. No, that's the reveal. I would say April.
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 And it's going to be like a six-month, I think you said, right?
Yep, yep. We want to hit all, we want to hit from, try to go April, Octoberish. And that hasn't been determined, but our thought is April, Octoberish.
But now wait, but if the, but so we would not have any, are you saying we wouldn't have any of the public meetings with all these constituent groups till after that?
No. We can't do your outreach plan. I don't know your community events of what you want to hit. We don't know the community organizations you have. We can't write that outreach plan until we get some of that information back. So we have research and homework to do in January, February with what you give us to write that.
That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that during, the survey period is like April to September, I think you basically said?
We don't know, I just threw that out there because we don't know until we get the data back from you and the events. If you have an event in August that you want us to hit, we would have to have the survey open until that event because that's where you're captioning everybody. We don't know that date yet.
But what I'm asking is, you wouldn't be having those public meetings or workshops until after all, after the survey is completed?
Correct.
So you're talking about not bringing the public in here until October? No, I mean, we got to get them in here. I mean, we got to start, we've got to start people talking.
So I guess, would you give us a chance to do our, this is a kickoff meeting. Would you give us a chance to do our campaign recommendation to you? Because then you can redline and give us, give us an option. And that's going to come to you prior to the March meeting. If you'd just give us an opportunity to be able to come up with a campaign outreach plan. I don't want to get put on the spot because we don't have data yet. We don't have, what's the event you want us to hit? What's the, how many organizations are there?
That's one of the things that's throwing me off.
Yeah, I don't know. Well, I mean, there are always events in town. I mean, there are fewer during the winter months. But, you know, I agree with Susan. I, you know, I keep coming back to, you know, getting live input and workshop meetings and things with various, you know, citizens of our community, you know, and not waiting until something like September or October to begin that process because I think there's going to have to be a number of those meetings with different groups from within the city and maybe even with some groups outside the city because they do impact us. And if we wait until March and we, you know, we're going to be, I think some of us are already frustrated with, you know, we've been talking about this and saying, well, this is the most important thing we have to address as a Planning Commission. And we started talking about this the month that I came on the commission over a year ago. And, and so I'm still not seeing the kind of progress that I'd like to see. And I think bringing the members of our citizens in as soon as we can and getting their input in addition to the written surveys is important. And it's important to start it sooner rather than later.
We can look at front-loading, as you had us change our scope for the SWAT to front-load that tonight. So we can look at front-loading topics based on the data. So the data that we'll have in March, that we can, we can rearrange and front-load again and try to say, if you give us the community organizations and who you might want to talk to, we can say, here's the data that we collected in March that we're going to reveal of what reveals from the census, the county and state. And that might form some topics that you'd like to go out and have some discussions with. I would probably wait till that point because you still have work to do in January, February. And we have not been given an opportunity, once again, to do the campaign outreach plan for you to be able to say if you like it or not. We do have a scope, we do have a schedule, we have a signed contract. So we're willing to work outside of that and have flexibility. We just need an opportunity to be able to present to redline. And this is the first meeting that we've had.
You know, and I think one of the things I'm struggling with is you talk about a community event, you know, and like having a tent and everything. But when I think of the community events here, the ones that bring in the most people are things like, you know, the marathons or the sea witch. And that brings in all kinds of people.
Correct.
But for the process of us talking with our various constituent groups, you know, I mean, the homeowners association meets twice a year, but we get about 50 or 60 people, you know? And so there's not one place where you're going to find everybody unless you bring them here.
Exactly. But when we scoped it, we offered that we would come to one community event, pick one just to, for us, for KCI to be there for that versus topic-driven. So it's to promote the project.
But I don't know that there is, I mean.
You know, it's too bad we missed the unity dinner, you know? We had a lot of, a lot of people there from, from the community.
And we don't discontinue 50 people in HOA. That's important. That's a, that is a community organization to dive into. So that should be on the list because then, once we get that list of community organizations, how many are we talking about? What are the events to hit? And you have a list.
Yeah, I think if I might.
You have a list of events, it's on the city's website.
We have a difference of opinion. Hey, guys.
This is the event here, yeah.
From the very beginning, when we held our first meetings back in April, we have a fundamental, somewhat difference of opinion of the best way to make these contacts. And I think either one, I'll try and defend Debbie's position.
Thank you.
Debbie's position is that, how do I know who I need to talk to until I collect some valid data, we analyze it, and then we sort of see where the big bubbles are? The opposite, which you and Susan, and to a great degree, I and perhaps other people, is that by our experience of participating in the city, we have a, an idea of at least some of the major areas. And, and I think that the difference, and I would argue that bringing, having a meeting here with maybe several different focus groups at the same meeting, a charrette or multi-charrettes in one day, which is the way we did the 2010 plan, you do get focused. You get the people who are interested in a particular subject. You may miss a bunch of people who just didn't want to spend the time, but you do get some very valid data. So does it make a difference whether you seek out and go make a presentation to the quote "bike" group? Or whether you say, we're going to have a charrette and discuss about biking in the city and you let them know and they show up for us? It probably doesn't make any difference which way you do it, okay? And so, but I do think that there are some very fundamental areas where we can have earlier discussions and bring people in. The advantage of bringing people in, in my mind, of having small groups, is that you get feedback. You get an interactive feedback between people. If you only go by survey, the person fills out the survey, doesn't hear somebody's answer that says, gee, what you suggested isn't exactly the right thing, but how about this? that says, "Gee, what you suggested isn't exactly the right thing, but how about this?" So, I think it takes both of those.
We had a great, and you'll get an opportunity to see this when we give some ideas in our plan, an outreach plan. That is a mini-plan of outreach. In one of the communities, we had stations where we had it in a convention center, where we had topics by stations, and the planning commissioners manned the stations with a map and had different topics. And the people that cared about that topic went to the station. And it was, for that community, it was very successful. We had, I think, twelve stations, and we did it on a Saturday, and then we did it in the middle of the week in the evening, so people could come. We had the weekend events with, but it was in a large convention center, and alls we did was set up different, and the planning commissioners got to talk, and they took notes, and then we collectively brought notes, because not everybody wants to hear about all the topics. So, it was a great test station.
And that was our experience.
So, that was one, that's one mechanism that we put in. So, we have several different other ones of how you can really get your biggest bang for your buck. And they, a lot of people like the one-on-one versus sitting in the audience, and they want to say something, but maybe they don't want to say it in front of everybody. So, that one-on-one is good, too.
Well, let me just say, because it is beyond our five o'clock time, we're gonna look at the best way to communicate with the public.
Yes.
And it may be multiple different ways, okay?
I think this has been wonderful. It's been very informative. I hear nothing but win-wins between the consultant approach. And I think we all have to believe in the approach and augment it with the things that we know about. So, I'm thrilled to have spent this time with y'all today.
Thank you all for coming.
It's fabulous.
Since we have the commissioners here, is there anything, without getting into details, but any generalities, is there anything that you feel is critically important or that we're missing so far? I mean, there's a lot been thrown out here covering a whole multitude of things, but I just, you know, personally, is there anything that just stands out and say, "Jesus, I wish they'd have done this," or "They thought about this"?
Well, anybody want to go?
Not me right now. I'm pleased with the plan. I could see everybody's passion, and I think you want to get this thing done sooner than later. And Debbie's, I think, has a valid plan, and I think you're gonna work it out.
I think the big challenge that we face is the difference between short-term, what you, you know, what do I do tonight, sort of speak? And in general, the commissioners are usually focused a little bit more on that. But you gotta remember that a comprehensive plan, because it's out for ten years, you're trying to say, "What should this city be like in ten years, or in twenty years?" Okay? And that's very difficult thinking. That takes some, that's not planning commission normal work. That takes some very creative thinking about saying, "What can happen? What do we want this city to be like?" And then what steps do we start to impose that we get there? The plan will change, yeah, it'll change every five years or ten years, but you gotta think ahead. And I associate that with a course that I took many years ago in creative engineering, and it was Dr. Land of Polaroid who came and lectured to us, and said, "If you're, think of going to the future as climbing a ladder, and a particular rung is where you're headed for." He says, "You can never get to that spot unless you go beyond it and drop back." Which is an interesting thought relative to sort of creative engineering or creative thinking. He said, "If you only keep working to get to that rung, you'll never get to that rung." You gotta think beyond where you think you can go, and then drop back to reality. And that's difficult to do, it's a different way of thinking. But that's part of our job, but part of our job is also, what do we do tonight? You know, what do we do next year? And we got a lot of homework.
Well, just to offer, just to offer two really quick things to Mike's question, it was your question, right?
Yes.
The whole time I've been sitting here, I was thinking about some language from previous CDPs, and it's a couple of sentences that have always stayed with me, and they are, "We're a town within a town," and that little section in there. And what's always, what I've always thought was challenging about that is the acknowledgement that that is-
Reality.
Reality is there, but the implementation and the articulation of what do we do about that, how do both entities exist-
Complement.
And complement each other, you know exactly what I'm talking about. I think this is a great new start to think about some of that as this plan really starts to take shape. So, for me, this has been very, it makes me very optimistic for the end product, that it's gonna be great, and to trust the process, and it'll be a great success.
Mike and David, the thing that I thought about here, and I like the timeline, and as long as Susan continues to keep that anxiety level going, so that we can worry about the timeline.
By the way, it's her birthday today.
Then I think we're good, yes.
I gave the homework on your birthday.
And my wedding anniversary.
Congratulations, happy, happy.
I celebrate the lower number.
Yeah. It's a, you know, most of us are in these roles, are dealing with the day-to-day, the week-to-week, the month-to-month problems, opportunities, threats, whatever they are. But they're, but they're here and now, and that's just, you know, reality for us. So, and then, as people do surveys, that's kind of a reality in survey-taking, too. They're thinking, you know, what's, what's in front of them now, what's bothering them, what's good, what's... So, how do we get stretched? And this builds on what you said just a few minutes ago. There are futurists out there, there are people that do nothing but think. And I'm not talking about, you know, science fiction writers, I'm talking about, you know, real people that are futurists in urban and city planning. And somehow, we need to think about, how do we get those folks to stretch our thinking about possibilities, too, and yet to stay within realities that we know we have?
Well, I think in that regard, we should revisit Ed McMahon's presentation. There were two videos created from it, one about the city, the other about tourism specifically.
You just revealed your comment.
No, I didn't, I didn't make it. No, that's the funniest thing about it, is I was actually part of the group that brought him to town. It was, what, two-plus years ago? I kind of forgot about it. Because we did have the follow-up meeting, and whoever made that comment clearly wants to bring it back. And a lot of things came out of that meeting, and frankly, that group, you think it, well, maybe.
Oh, yes, it was changed.
And the things that came out of that group was interesting, because it was representatives of a bunch of different organizations. I mean, it was great, but it was all sort of ad hoc, and it wasn't that the comp plan hadn't started yet. It all sounded possible, but honestly, if we could go back and, you know, I think those videos should be required viewing, and for myself as well, I haven't looked at them in two years. But it was, you know, he's a TED Talk, a future, you know, so he's an urban planning futurist and does this great TED Talk.
Does a good job.
And it's a good place to start.
Anything else?
I just want to thank you all for having us come here, sit with you, and I want to congratulate you on your first livestream meeting. I'm sure you all each run home and watch yourselves on TV.
When I was there, I don't need to see it again.
Thank you, thank you.
Can I have a Jan motion?
I move this week.
Adjourned?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very helpful.
Debbie, thank you.
Thank you very much.